Good evening, everyone. It is February the eighth, two thousand and sixteen, six P. M., and I call this regular school board meeting to order. Mr. Salazar, I know that you have some students here to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
That's right. At this time, we'd like to introduce students from Rancho Verde and Olmito Elementary. At this time, Ms. Pineda will introduce us to students from Rancho Verde.
Good evening, Mr. Salazar, school board members and guests. This evening, on behalf of Rancho Verde Elementary, I'm happy to introduce to you Joshua and Victoria. Joshua Vela is a fifth grade student in Mrs. Crouch's class. His parents are Damian and Ana Vela. Joshua's favorite subject is social studies. During this school year, he has been involved in the running club. Joshua loves to read the Percy Jackson books. He is also involved in basketball outside of school. His goal is to attend the UT of Austin to become a professional basketball player with the San Antonio Spurs. Joshua Vela. Victoria Garcia is a fifth grade student, also in Mrs. Crouch's class. Her mom is Maria Angelica Garcia. Victoria's favorite subject is math. She is an A student. During this school year, she's been involved in the drama club, running club, recycling team, an EAE participant in oral reading, and the breakfast reading club. This year, Victoria played the leading role in our Annie Play. Victoria loves to run and read. Her favorite book she has read this year has been The Ghost of Crutchfield Hall. Her goal is to attend either Texas A. M., and she wants to become a third grade teacher to follow in Mrs. Crouch's footsteps. I introduce to you Victoria.
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Salazar, Madam President, and audience members. It's a delight to be here this evening to showcase our students from Olmito Elementary, a two thousand and fifteen nationally recognized blue ribbon school. Olivia Faith Noyola is the daughter of Francisco and Yolanda Noyola. While at Olmito, she has maintained excellent attendance and is an honorable student. To be successful and achieve her dreams, she understands that attendance in grades have to be her priority. Mrs. Gracie Rubio is her proud fourth grade teacher. Olivia is a member of our drum club, Groove. She was the first marathon kid to reach thirteen point one mile mark. Music is very important to Olivia. She loves to play the piano and sing and has done so at our talent shows. By the year twenty twenty-four and one thousand nine hundred and seventy miles towards the east coast, Olivia will hopefully become an honorable student at Juilliard Art School in New York, New York. In her spare time, Olivia enjoys teaching her grandparents English, participating in tennis, and enjoys a game of golf with her dad on weekends, helps out in the kitchen, and playing with her puppy, Chloe. She is proud to be here this evening to represent the district and her school. Carol Martinez is currently a fifth grade student with Mrs. Rosie Maldonado. She is the daughter of Opolina and Olivia Martinez. Carol is a member of the Groove Club and has most recently joined the Marathon Kid Club. She is an honorable student and has perfect attendance. Carol understands that in order to succeed and achieve her goals, she must discipline herself to do her best and never give up. She is still undecided about what college she would like to attend, but one thing is certain, for she will be an exceptional student to any alma mater by twenty twenty-three. Carol plans on becoming a teacher, not only because of her love of math, but because an amazing teacher inspired her to desire the profession. Los Fresnos C. I. D. will be waiting for her someday to teach our future. In her spare time, Carol enjoys singing and dancing, and she has also participated in gymnastics. She too is proud to be here this evening to represent the district and her school. Olivia and Carol have honorably accepted to lead the pledge this evening, but cannot do so without their team. Please help me welcome the First Annual Olmito Elementary School Sign Language Club under the direction of their sponsor, Mr. Eric Juarez, Mr. Zach Mercado. Please join us. This is their first evening. They're desiring or looking to aiming at goals. Tonight is their night as a signed club to earn the ranks at a district level, campus level, and a parent night. So this is a great success for them this evening. Thank you all.
Again, ladies and gentlemen, these students are here to help lead us in the pledge. Will everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the United States of America, I pledge allegiance to the United States, one nation, under God, one indivisible.
If everyone can remain standing for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. You may be seated. Boys and girls, thank you so much, and that was so impressive. The parents of these students, if you are here, please stand and be recognized. Thank you for taking the time to come and be with us tonight. Mr. Maya, will you please call roll?
Mr. Alan Peterson.
Present.
Mr. Ruben Trevino.
Present.
Jesus Tamaya, I'm present. Mr. Lionel Gata.
Present.
Mr. Martin Castillo.
Present.
Mr. Ray Farias.
Present.
Ms. Sandra Garcia.
Present.
Mr. Gonzales Salazar.
Present.
Our councilman, Deandro Pies. Also assisting us tonight, participating in the meeting, Mr. David Young, Ms. Valerie Landry, Mr. Joseph Biadell, Ms. Ana Amaro Chivaca, and a guy we never acknowledge, and he's like the director of operations of board meetings. Mr. Ronnie Samora, I know you have other official titles, Ronnie, but thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you, Mr. Maya. Next on the item, number five, district recognition. Number one, National Hispanic Scholar Award. Mr. Salazar, I hand that over to you, please.
Mrs. Peterson, members of the board, the achievement and performance of our students has been noted at the national level, and here to tell us about our National Hispanic Scholar Awards is our principal, Mr. Ronnie Rodriguez.
Mrs. Peterson, members of the board, Mr. Salazar. The National Hispanic Recognition Program is a college board program to identify outstanding Hispanic high school students. The National Hispanic Recognition Program identifies approximately five thousand of the highest scoring students from a nationwide total of two hundred and fifty thousand high school students using their PSAT scores when they took the PSAT. In the career of a principal, sometimes you get one a year, sometimes you get two, sometimes you get none. This year, we have eight, and that's incredible for a high school of our size and a community of our size. So I'm very proud of these young men and women. These students honored this evening scored in the top two point five percent among Hispanic and Latino students who took the PSAT in our region. It is, I'm so very proud to introduce these students. They're highly, highly involved in our campus, in our community, and to continue to keep up their grades and do the well that they do on assessments is just an honor. At this time, I'd like to introduce Miranda Gonzalez.
Mr. Rodriguez, what are the names of the students that could not be here today? Let's acknowledge them as well.
Yes, sir. Sorry. The other students that couldn't be here today are Lucero Durantes, Ms. Lucero Durantes, and Jocelyn Sosa Ramirez.
Thank you, sir.
The parents of these students, can you please stand and be recognized, please? Thank you for taking the time and being with us tonight. And what an honor to have such wonderful students. What an accomplishment. We can move on to item number six, district reports. Mr. Salazar, please.
Mrs. Peterson, the members of the board, we present to you our monthly financial reports, and at this time, we would entertain any question you might have.
Are there any questions? Okay, I know we've had a chance to review these, so if there are no questions, we can move on to item number seven. There was no one that signed up for public audience tonight? Item number eight is consent agenda. We have three items on consent agenda. Do we have a motion? Ms. Trevino.
Yes, Madam President. I move that we approve consent agenda. It's written on today's agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Farias. All in favor to approve consent agenda, items one through three, please raise your hands. Motion passes unanimously. Item number nine, action items. Number one, discuss and take action to approve the proposal ranking for CSP number fifteen dash sixteen dash thirty-two Indoor Practice Facility and CSP number fifteen dash sixteen dash thirty-two dash one Aquatic Center, and instruct administration to engage in contract negotiation with the highest ranking proposal representing the best value to the district. Do we have a motion? Mr. Garza.
I move that we approve the proposal of ranking of CSP fifteen sixteen thirty-two Indoor Practice Facility and CSP fifteen sixteen thirty-two one Aquatic Center and instruct administration to engage in contract negotiation with the highest ranking proposal representing the best value to the district.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Maya. Any discussion? All in favor to approve item number one, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two, consider and take possible action to adopt board resolution to initiate designation of Los Fresnos C. I. S. D. as a district of innovation. Do we have a motion? Mr. Trevino.
Yes, Madam President. I move that we adopt the board resolution to initiate designation of Los Fresnos C. I. S. D. as a district of innovation.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Garza. Any discussion? All in favor to approve item number two, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three, public hearing to receive stakeholder input and consider whether Los Fresnos C. I. S. D. should develop a local innovation plan for designation as a district of innovation. Do we have a motion? Mr. Maya.
Mr. Amaro, that we approve.
Mr. Maya.
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me. It's a matter of a public hearing. There's not a motion to be made on this item. Would open it up for any stakeholders that have any comments? Thank you.
I go understanding, so I'll take.
So.
Um, it's, uh, we're on video.
Yeah, but, okay.
Um, Mrs. Peterson, if I may.
Go ahead.
Um, I'd like to ask Mrs. Amato for the benefit of those members of the audience, this is a public hearing, to give us a brief explanation as to what we are pursuing as a district of innovation and how this would be a benefit to our students. The Texas Education Code, our desire to participate, to get this designation would help us start school a week earlier and thus finish a week earlier, but it's important that we share with everyone why, why we would like to start a week earlier.
Good afternoon. What I have here is a review, and I'm going to shortly briefly review our two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen. You have two copies that Mr. Vidal helped me pass out. The first one is the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen academic calendar. This is what we currently have. Briefly, in August, we entered school on staff development day, August the seventeenth. We had the seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty as staff in service, the twenty-first is the workday. Student's first day, first day of classes was on August the twenty-fourth. As we look at this, our semester ended this, in this calendar year, on January the fifteenth. We started our second semester on January the nineteenth, and we would end courses or our school on, I'll take it all the way to June the second, with a workday on the third. The circle items, if you look at the box or the rectangular, those are end of course dates, and our circle items are star dates. We have testing in December for end of course at the high school. In March, we have star. In May, our spring assessments, we have from the second to the fifth. High school end of course from the ninth to the thirteenth, we have our star tests. Then we have summer testing in June for summer school for our third and fifth grade students and our middle school students. We have star on the twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third. And then we have our high school students coming back in July, July eleventh through the fifteenth for end of course testing. So that's what's going to happen this school year. The next one, the two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, this is just a skeleton. It's just briefly our end, our beginning and our ending date. We look at two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen with a district of innovation. We're proposed to start on August the eighth through the eleventh as a staff development day, a workday on the twelfth. We will begin classes on August the fifteenth. Now, we look at this, our semester will end on December the twenty-first before our Christmas break. In December, we look at that rectangular, rectangle again, and we see from the fifth to the ninth as end of course testing. We will come back and start our new semester on January the ninth. Now, we have testing on March, the twenty-eighth to the thirty-first is star. In May, the second to the fifth is end of course. Eight through the twelve, we would have star. Now, if we will start a week earlier on students for August the fifteenth, we would end with students by May the twenty-fifth with a workday on the twenty-sixth. We look at this, we see June. On the prior one, you saw testing in June, and you saw testing in July. For the two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen, all testing will occur between June the nineteenth through June the twenty-third. Do you remember the other one, high school came back in July? Next year, it's all going to be that same week, on June the nineteenth to the twenty-third. When we look at this, we say, okay, we can start summer school on the twenty-ninth, giving the opportunity for enrichment from the twenty-ninth. They'll have one week from May the twenty-ninth to June the second, two weeks, three weeks before our start, and then of course, on June the nineteenth to the twenty-third.
Go ahead, Ms. Garcia.
So then, grad, like, right after school would end, like, on the twenty-seventh, we wouldn't wait for June, right?
Mm-hmm. That would automatically, twenty-seventh.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Farias, I'm sorry.
I'm looking at, uh, in both calendars. Now, this is supposed to be a district of innovation. Now, what, what actually will we be doing? What type of innovative ideas are we going to be doing besides, uh, besides starting early and ending? And it's great that we're going to finish the first semester in December. That way, we can start anew on that. But what else, as far as the innovation, what are we, what else are we doing besides the calendar?
Man, I should explain, Mr. Farias. Charter schools have been able to start school a week earlier than the rest of the public schools. Charter schools were created as labs of innovation, and some of the differences between charter schools and the rest of the public school systems are that they don't have to abide by some of the, some of the laws that are currently in the books. And for quite some time now, we've been asking for everyone to level, for the legislature to level the playing field, because aside from being able to start school earlier, what else, what other, what else have these labs of innovation come up with? And so, this piece of legislation, and perhaps it's a misnomer, but this piece of legislation allows school districts to waive some of the things, some of the laws that charter schools have had, have had for a while. And all this does is give our students the same advantage that children in other, other systems have had for some, some time. Being able to start the school year earlier means ending earlier, so the neediest population, and remember, we serve everyone that comes to our doors. The neediest population, the kids that are having to take state assessment for the third time, would now have additional instructional time prior to that third administration. So this is step one for us. This would be step one. This is the low hanging fruit, if you will. This piece of legislation just came through, and so as we move forward in future years, we will come back to you with true innovations. What are some things that we can do differently? We are currently working with the business world to do some, to have some internships and job shadowing opportunities for students participating in CTE. So a year from now, we will be talking to you about probably reducing minutes of instruction for students who are not directly in the classroom, but they're out in the workforce getting valuable experience as we pursue our mission to develop, you know, students that are college and career ready. So this is, this is the first step. This is the low hanging fruit. We'll come back to you with innovation as we, as we move forward.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Ms. Garcia.
I just have a comment. Now, we adopt this, and then, if it's adopted, well, we already did, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. But it doesn't.
Yeah, are we stuck now with the week before? I mean, I think it's a great idea, but it's going to be explained to, like, all the teachers and the parents, because there's going to be a lot of questions.
Yes, we actually, uh, talked, introduced the topic at the last week's teacher advisory committee, and then also touched on it and answered, answered questions for teachers at the DEIC. And the process calls for initiating it with either board resolution or a petition by teachers. And then, and then going back to committee, developing a plan, writing a narrative that we would have to submit to the commissioner and wait for a response. So that's why we're doing it now, because the school calendar needs to be prepared. And there are other districts that may be doing some other things that they feel are innovative, like cutting the high school day short, releasing kids at one o'clock. And I think, um, some districts would benefit from having extended day, and that's not innovation that we're willing to try at this time. Other, and so, anyway, I ramble. I hope I've answered the question. Yes, we would need to go back and then bring it to you for final approval, bring whatever the committee puts together, we have to bring to you for final approval. And in that process, part of what the process calls for is a thirty day posting of what we're trying to accomplish, because the, there are many opportunities to do things that might even be controversial in the community. And so this process allows for, for community input. The thirty day, the thirty day posting gives community members a chance to chime in and either express opposition or support.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? I know this is something new, and, Mr. Maya, I want to apologize, but we were in the understanding that we needed to approve three items, and so that's why it's listed here on action items. But it's just a process of having to go through this innovation, so this is just like step one for us. Are there anybody in the audience that have questions? Because this is a public hearing. I'm sorry, Mr. Maya.
Number four is to appoint, for the district to appoint a committee to carry, to put this plan together. The reason for Ms. Amato sharing is to give you an idea of what we would recommend, what we're trying to accomplish through this process. Ideally, if I may make a suggestion, most of our improvement opportunities emanate from the DEIC discussions and dialogue at the DEIC. So I would ask that you might, that you would consider appointing the DEIC as that committee. You can appoint any committee that you want. You could, it could be a committee of a cross-section of the district, but, or a select group of people that you, that you, of your choosing. But if I'm, again, if I may suggest, the DEIC includes administration, parents, and business, members of the business community. But, so yes, we would have to take, there we do need action. Our minutes need to reflect that the board appointed a committee.
Is that correct, Ms. Cortez?
Ms. Garcia.
Okay.
Uh, yes, that's correct. And what we would be doing, actually, at the close of the public hearing, once that would be moving on to the next item, since the way that it's listed, at the close of the public hearing, you all can determine whether or not you want to continue with this process, which the next step would be the appointment of a committee. And as of right now, there are no requirements that TEA has put on or any legislative requirements as to who the members of the committee are or how large the committee is required to be or small. This is a This is a new, um, new process for, that was just implemented in twenty fifteen. And so we are still waiting for rules, uh, to come down, uh, from TEA. But at this time, we can proceed. If the, the district, uh, wants to proceed, then the appointment of a committee would be the next step. Ms. Peterson, I would suggest or recommend, um, that the, uh, you close the public hearing and then after the closure of the public hearings, you can call for, um, a vote as to whether or not to proceed, um, in appointment of a committee and, and preparation of a local, um, district innovation plan.
Okay. Are there any other questions at this time? Yes, Ms. Fadias.
Mr. Salazar, as far as the, uh, are, do we still have a lot, uh, uh, a lot of migrants that come in late, uh, to school?
Um, yes, sir.
What I'm saying is, uh, September?
Those, the numbers of migrant students continue to, to dwindle. Every year, we have fewer, fewer migrant students. We do have a recruiter working hard to identify them, but yet we have fewer, fewer migrant students these days than we had years ago, yes, sir.
Any other questions? Do we need to clarify anything, please?
If I could just add, we're still pending, uh, as we form our committee, our staff development days and our holidays. All that is missing from this calendar.
Okay.
So mostly it was the beginning of the year and when we're ending our year. I think, uh, the only thing I put in there was our March and we did not finish our December holiday. Our March is our spring break. It just goes with the Texas spring break.
Okay, thank you.
And everything else is still missing.
Mr. Fadias, did you have something else? Go ahead there.
Um, Mr. Fadias recently spoke at a tree planting ceremony and, and shared, reminded high school students that back when he was principal, uh, one of the innova- innovative things that they did was have fewer instructional days and more, um, fewer instructional days and more staff development days. And in those staff development days, uh, they found ways to do things differently at the high school and that's why we are where we are today. Uh, so many of the things that are in place today date back to that. So the reason for his question, well, what innovative things are we doing? Um, that's where, that's where that come fro- comes from. And so we're, again, we, as, in the future, we'll be able to explore more of those things. But because time is of the essence, we, we would like to consider, at least for the school start date, which would be beneficial for kids and then give ourselves more time to look at what other innovative things we can incorporate the next time we, we approach you, which would be about this time next year.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Amado. That concludes the public hearing. Uh, before we go to item number four, or we can go ahead and discuss the committee that Mr. Salazar has suggested. You wanna go ahead and? Okay, for item number four, we'll, um, deliberate and take poss- possible action to appoint a committee to develop a local innovation plan. Do we have a motion? Mr. Maya.
Far on top of scars, so. I move that we direct the superintendent to appoint a committee to develop a local innovation plan.
Okay, is there a second? Mr. Fadias? Okay, now during our discussion. Oh, yeah, yes, Mr. Garcia. Go ahead, yes, Mr. Garcia.
This is quite convoluted. And, uh, I read the motion, and no disrespect to anybody, was also not clear. According to item four, now, going back, uh, I'm for all this, uh, district innovation, hundred percent. But here on, to deliberate, it's asking us to deliberate. And as a Webster, to me deliberate means for us to discuss it. And take possible action to appoint a committee to develop a local innovation plan. Uh, for us to be, to do something like this at this time is, uh, we're kinda shooting at hip here. I think, you know, we ought to possibly take time to, and do this, right? Whether, you know, I know we need to get this done as far as for, uh, the dates, for, for, for the calendar. That's, that's a given and I think we should start on the calendar. But on the innovation plan, I think it should be done probably under policy, you know, or, or, or committee, so that we can speak freely there and really discuss this. Because as far, uh, as, uh, ideas need to be thrown out. And for us to be throwing out ideas right now and then whether we want business people in the community or whether we do not, whether we want the DE, what was it you said, DE?
The district, DEIC.
Uh, and, uh, I should, and it should be, all be discussed. But, uh, to do this at this time, you know, I, I think it's, it's, it's kinda handcuffing us. But again, I'm, this is just one opinion and, and if the rest of y'all feel that we're re- we're good to go, well, hey, I'm a team person and we're good to go, because I think this is an extremely good idea. Of course, it's going to innovation and I, I have a lot of confidence in our administration that, you know, what we're gonna put forth, we're gonna, it's gonna be, uh, quite a good place for, to put our students in position to be successful, so, you know. But I do have some concerns, that's all I'm gonna say.
Yes, Ms. Maya, go ahead.
In making the motion, I, I directed the, my motion was to direct the superintendent to appoint a committee to develop a local innovation plan. Uh, and I, I think, taking what I saw here, that's the best I could do. But deliberate to me means nothing more than discuss. Take possible action, we put it everywhere, take action, uh, take, right above it says take possible action. So, uh, although I think this was done backwards and I don't know how we set this up, but I think it was done backwards and I agree with that. Uh, I would, I would think that once the committee was appointed, he would have to come back to us for approval. I don't know. And so we, uh, we're just directing him to, to appoint a committee and then have to come back to us, uh, with, with, for the approval. Uh, and the reason I said it that way is so in discussion, if someone wa- wanted to give him the, to give our superintendent and our, our board chair the suggestion that they might wanna use a DEIC since it's already a, a comprehensive, it's a cross section of people, both business, uh, parents, business leaders in the community, parents and students and teachers. Uh, that's why I think that we suggested to him at the beginning, even the first time we talked about it in policy, was that just be careful if he brings a DEIC, because I'm afraid that they were gonna want more days off, holidays instead of innovation. That's the only innovation we're gonna do. Take three weeks off for Christmas and two weeks off for Thanksgiving. So that's, given what we had here, I thought I, I, that's what I, that's why I made the motion the way I made it.
Mr. Garcia.
In no way am I, am I trying to, uh, you know, say anything in the negative as far as anything here, especially as, as the way the motion was put down, uh, anything. But I will say that it, 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 that it will come back to us, uh, as far as approval on it. Uh, just a quick question. Uh, if, if, if not approved by the board, where, where do we go from there? You know, and I, I, maybe I'm just getting a, I'm putting the cart ahead of the horse out here and maybe we just need to just follow the procedure, let y'all do your job, because y'all have always done it the, in a very professional way and we've always talked about it and we've always supported the recommendation. So I'll just, what I need to do is just sit here and just be quiet.
Your comments are valid. Your comments are valid, Mr. Garcia. Go ahead.
Mr. Garcia, yes, uh, we would bring it back to the board for, for approval before submitting any narrative for approval at, uh, at TEA. Um, so the board still has an opportunity to give direction to review, you know, what type of innovation? Did, did all we do is add more days off? Or are we releasing kids when they should actually be here longer? You, you have that oversight authority and so, yeah, we would bring it back. We would either go back to the drawing board or proceed without the distinction of, the designation. Uh, I'm sorry, without the designation, not distinction, so.
Thank you. Is, yes, Mr. Maya.
Just one question, timeline on this, are we putting someone behind the eight ball here? We don't move on something and change something or?
Uh, uh.
Because this whole thing seems, I don't know what convoluted means, but if it means backwards, it seems better.
It, it's a bit complicated and new to all of us and so we're, 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 uh, trailblazers, if you will. But, um, it is, um, by taking three items as, uh, together, uh, we are definitely gonna meet, meet our deadline by doing it this way. Uh, the, the law says that soon after the board adopts a resolution, you should hold a public hearing and then post, post for thirty days what your plan is for, for, uh, community input. By, by doing it all tonight, we move the timeline along and so we sh- we should be okay if you take action tonight, tonight.
Trailblazers are only those who found their destination. Everybody else just got lost. So we wanna make sure we're don't going down the right trail.
Okay, so are we clear on this motion? Yes, okay. Any other discussion? Yes, Ms. Garcia.
But we, we're not appointing a committee yet, right?
We're directing.
We're directing you to appoint a committee.
Correct.
And then you have to come back to us with the committee and then you have to post it for thirty days, whatever the committee comes up with.
So, so I, I.
So when does the calendar come out?
Thir- thirty, thirty days, thirty days, so right back, we're gonna have to have a special meeting of a committee. What I'm understanding is the board has the authority to name a committee, but you're delegating that to me. Go ahead, for, for the superintendent to go ahead and appoint a committee, is that correct?
Correct.
And so we'll, we'll call a special meeting of, 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 of this committee, uh, come up with a plan and post it for thirty days to get input. Then we'll bring all of that input and the feedback, uh, the plan from the committee and whatever input we get from community, if any, uh, to you, uh, and then you will approve a final plan.
Yes, Ms. Maya.
But how can you have, meet with a committee that we haven't approved?
That's why, that's why I need a clarification. Are you delegate, are you directing me to appoint a committee? Because you can appoint a committee here tonight. That's what the item is for, for you to appoint a committee. I was only suggesting the DEIC, but it could be whoever you, whoever you want. If, if you, if you decide not, not the DEIC.
Ms. Garcia.
The confusion is the motion right now is to just appoint a committee. That, that's the motion that's, that's been made. Back to us for approval. So then if we wanted to come back for approval, then somebody else has to make a motion.
If I may, Ms. Peterson.
Go ahead, Ms. Ortiz.
I, I think y'all have confusion as to how the committee, um, is to be designated tonight and, uh, at the close of the public hearing, which is what we already did, then we are, you guys are able to discuss, uh, what and how, what type of committee you want, how big you want it, how many members you want on it. Um, you're also able to delegate that responsibility to the superintendent, that's fine, um, as long as it comes down from the board. Um, because it's the board that's in charge of making sure that there is a committee, um, that will develop the local, uh, innovation plan. So if you all want to do the committee tonight separately, that's fine. If you want to appoint, um, or delegate the task to the superintendent, um, you can do that as well. And he's, he's already informed you that his, uh, recommendation is the DEIC committee. Um, so you can accept that or not. Um, and then, once that is done, that committee will meet, um, and come up with a plan. Uh, and that plan is what comes back to you all for approval. That has to be posted, has to be, uh, and we have to inform the commissioner about it. Um, and then, and then there's gotta be an adoption of that plan. So that's done by the board. But, um, I mean, all of this is done by the board, but it will come back to you for approval. What we're talking about is you can do the committee tonight, um, however you all like. I mean, it's, it's really very open-ended, which is maybe some of the confusion, because we're very used to having, uh, policy that dictates specifically how we do these things. So this is something new, um, that you guys have, have free rein on how you wanna appoint this committee.
Thank you, Ms. Ortiz. Ms. Garcia.
So, just to refresh my memory, if I remember, who's on the DEIC?
Um, two teachers, two teachers from each campus that have been elected by their peers, uh, administrators, uh, campus and district administrators, uh, parents and, uh, community members.
Ms. Garcia, go ahead.
What is the total number of, um, committee members on that committee?
This is a model.
And the reasoning behind having the DEIC be the committee?
Um, u- usually, every year we take cali- calendar initiates at the DEIC, um, and all stakeholders are represented there, um, that's the only reason. But if you choose a smaller committee, you could say cabinet or leadership team. The reason I, again, the reason I said, only suggested DEIC is because there's representation of all stakeholders there.
Ms. Garcia.
Is the cabinet on this too, or no?
Yes, ma'am.
Call the cabinet, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Peterson.
And with a committee that size, you haven't had any issues, like, you know, sometimes the, the more people that are involved, the harder it is to get it, things done, but they work well together?
Uh, yes, in fact, um, we, there's true consensus. A lot of the decisions are, we always approach, especially calendar decisions there with the end in mind. When kids get to the high school, what are, what are some of the, so sometimes a lot of the elementary, the elementary teachers outnumber the representatives at the high school, but they listen and they listen and they, they understand the concerns at the high school level, everything that deals with when dual enrollment classes start, when they end, what the high school registrar has to juggle. Uh, it's, it's really very interesting, a very interesting process and a lot of give and take. But, uh, we always reach, we have been able to reach consensus.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So at this time, this motion is to go ahead and allow our superintendent to form a committee, correct?
So I understand, I understood the motion to be.
That was the motion by Mr. Maya.
For the, um, to approve the supr- for the superintendent to direct, or to direct the superintendent, um, to appoint a committee for the local, for the local innovation plan, is what I understood.
Okay. Ms. Maya.
As a maker of that motion, I'm really not comfortable with it. After the discussion from the trustees, I don't know what my position, I mean, what my options are at this point. Uh, when I made it, uh, it was clumsy. That's the way it stands right now. I'm not gonna get my feet hurt if somebody amends a motion. It's, it's not gonna hurt me.
You may withdraw the motion, Mr. Maya, if you like.
I'd be afraid I'd be overruled at this point.
Ms. Garcia.
I don't think that, that the motion needs to be amended. I think the motion, uh, uh, needs to stand, because this is what's on the floor right now. That's the motion's been set. And, uh, and, uh, I think with the, this process, that I truly, uh, believe in and support makes, if, for it to be, uh, moved to the next step, probably after a discussion, that this is probably, you know, a start to get it going, uh, this way. If, if I've, if we as a board feel that we have.
If, if I've, if we as a board feel that we have hit any type of hurdles, you know, and uh, with what is, is gonna come back for approval as far as that, that uh, calendar and stuff, then at that time, we could work together with the superintendent to maybe uh, work on a, a, a different committee. But uh, it sounds like the administration, cabinet and everybody involved feel very comfortable with these stakeholders that we've had in place. The input has been, you know, positive. So I, I, I think the motion needs to, does not need to be amended.
Was there a second?
Yes, there was a second. We already had a first and a second.
I didn't make a motion.
Yeah.
No.
Mr. Farias seconded.
Yeah.
Mr. Maya made the first motion, Mr. Farias made the second. And then we're in discussion. Are we clear? Okay. So, all in favor to approve item number four? And that is to give the superintendent and delegate him to um, approve a committee? All in favor, please raise your hand. I'm sorry? Appoint a committee, yes. Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number five. Discuss and take appropriate action to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations for the following position for the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen school year. A, teachers. Do we have a motion? Ms. Garcia.
I move to approve the superintendent's recommendations for personnel for position of teachers for the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen school year.
Thank you, do we have a second? Ms. Tavina. Any discussion? All in favor to approve item number five, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. And I know that we have these teachers here today. And if you are here, please stand and be recognized. Thank you so much for choosing Los Fresnos as your home. And uh, and good luck to y'all. Thank you for being here. We are now going to item number ten, closed session pursuant to section five five one point zero seven one of the Texas government code to discuss superintendent's annual summative evaluation and to discuss superintendent's contract terms. It is six fifty-three. Okay, we are back from closed session. It is nine oh six P M. Item number two. To discuss an open session, this um, do we have a motion to take action to approve the summative performance evaluation of the superintendent as discussed in executive session? Ms. Garcia.
I, I move to approve the summative performance evaluation of the superintendent as we discussed in the executive session.
Is there a second? Ms. Tavina. All in favor to approve item number two? Please raise your hand. Unanimous decision. Number three. Discuss and take action to approve the terms of the superintendent's contract as discussed in executive session. Do we have a motion? Mr. Farias. Do we have a second? Ms. Garcia. All in favor to approve item number three? Please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Ms. Salazar, we can move on to item number twelve, announcement.
This is Peterson, members of the board. On uh, Tuesday, February ninth, ours, we have a soccer doubleheader here at home, beginning at five thirty. On Monday, February fifteenth, is the staff development day. We won't hold classes that day so that we can have staff development. Uh, the day after Valentine's Day is. Saturday, February twentieth, is the rodeo parade at eleven A M. And all of our schools are participating. And our next regularly scheduled board meeting is on March, Monday, March seventh. Those are all the announcements we have at this time.
Thank you. Anybody else have any announcements or anything? Okay, it is nine oh eight and I adjourn this meeting.